Good evening, everyone here in council chambers. And of course, those who might be viewing through our YouTube channel or other means through the Internet, we appreciate your attention and being here tonight, especially on this cold, somewhat windy, blustery day. And so, anyway, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage. Councilmember Savage is going to try to attend via Zoom, otherwise he will not be able to attend this evening. Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to please stand. It will be given by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our heads together. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this privilege that I have of serving by praying for our city council and our city leaders. As we begin this new year and with all the opportunities that it will bring, I ask that you would give our elected officials wisdom and discernment, that they would have ears that would listen and a heart that extends grace towards one another and their constituents. Father, I pray for all the agenda items that are going to be discussed, and the policies that will be crafted, and the decisions that will be made, that all the outcomes would be rational and moral and in the best interests of the citizens of our wonderful city. I thank you for always being with us and for hearing our prayers, and we look forward with hopeful anticipation of all the many blessings that you have for us as individuals and as a community when we look to you for guidance. And it's in the name of Jesus that I pray tonight. Amen.
Amen. I will lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number 1A, under presentation, seat of Kingman ambulance presentation, Chief Jaeger.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for having me tonight. So, as you saw when you pulled up outside, the new ambulance is parked out there. We've tried to get it in front of you over the last couple of months, but due to special meetings, and then we figured we'd pick tonight because it's possibly snow and cold and all of that. But we'll make it work. It is out there. So after the meeting, we'll be out there if you want to come take a look at it. So just a few things I do want to point out. It was delivered the end of September. That's when we were able to pick it up. We actually ordered it in August, and we were able to purchase it. It is a demo model, so it had to go on a little road tour, and they showed it off to some other cities. The cost of the unit was $274,000, and with tax, it was $296,000. We saved about $125,000 because it was a demo unit, as well as the two-year build wait time. So we were able to get it really quick because it was already done. And then, just a reminder, the reason for the purchase was our overtaxed local resources, no ambulances available, delayed response times. And by getting this unit, this gives us the ability to transport a critical patient when we're having to wait on a unit that's not available or waiting on a unit that's coming from Havasu. Excuse me. It gives us the ability to transport critical patients to the hospital when time is critical for the patient outcome. Those are the patients that this unit was purchased to transport, so we don't have to wait. We do have Arizona Department of Health Services guidelines that we have to follow, which gives us the ability, and working with Carl and his team, we were able to get those and define them in our policies and procedures. And those are really identified on critical patients, cardiac arrest, strokes, major traumas. Again, it's those time-sensitive calls that we need to get a patient to a higher level of care. And so, and then, as stated in my previous presentations, we've had a half dozen of those over the last two years that we've had to transport in pickup trucks or in a fire truck to the hospital. That was the reason for the initial coming to you to get the purchase of the unit. Internally, since we picked up the unit, it obviously takes time. We had to outfit it, put our stickers on it, install our radios, get the equipment for it, and then get it equipped. With that, we had to come, we had to put together the policies and procedures for our personnel, again, when they can transport, when they can't, and as far as operations of the vehicle. Again, Carl's team was amazing. We'd send him something, and within a day, we had it back. And we were able to make changes and get that completed pretty rapid. So, thank you, Carl, for your hard work on that. We had to do driver-operator training. Again, we're EMS-based, but we work out of fire trucks. So we have hired a lot of people that just have never driven an ambulance, have never worked in an ambulance, other than helping with a patient. So we had to put all of our personnel through drivers' training, as well as special equipment training specific to that ambulance, how to operate it, how to run the equipment in it. And so, that takes a little bit of time. But with that, I'd like to tell you tonight, after you see it, it'll be going in service. It's ready to go. So, any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions for Chief Jaeger? And of course, we're going to take a look, it'll stay out there, we'll take a look at it after council meeting tonight.
It'll stay out after the meeting, and we'll open it up, and if you have questions. I was going to have staff here, but they're on a structure fire right now, so I'll do my best. I worked on an ambulance, but I was a lot younger when I worked on an ambulance, so we'll get through it. We'll get through it.
I'm sure you'll be fine, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 2, Call to the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. So, we have a couple of citizens who would like to comment on, anyway, Call to the Public. So, Mr. Hollins, Wayne Hollins. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. I think about water and water awareness again for this year. Obviously, we don't get much, so we need to preverbe what we do get, and we need to teach the people what they can do to keep the water, because we need to keep the water where it falls. I noticed there's an article in the news about cleaning Mojave Wash. It looked like they was building a landing strip for a 747 out there. That doesn't keep the water where it needs to be. It helps it get out faster, cause erosion. The plants in there help slow down the water, take the filth out of it, and give it a chance to soak in the water. If anything, we need to be putting things in the wash to keep the water there longer. So, those are the things we need to think about, and I see we're going to do a new drainage Maybe if we didn't have so much water running off, we wouldn't need such drainage out there. Keep the water where it is and where it falls, and then it won't be running off, and we won't have to have such big detention dams and spend millions of dollars building them. The homeowners, property owners can do all that stuff and put water into the ground where they need it, not have to put it in the ground and buy it to get it back out. Just keep everybody's awareness up on water. We've only, I only got like two-thirds of an inch last monsoon season, so we don't get much, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. Next, we have Mojave County, from our Board of Supervisors from Mojave County, Mr. Lingenfelter, Travis Lingenfelter, welcome.
Great, good evening. Travis Lingenfelter, you're current District 1 County Supervisor, also going to be serving as the Chair of the Board this year again. We have three new supervisors. First and foremost, I just want to say Happy New Year to all of my friends, wish you all health, prosperity, and, you know, to start the new year, we do have another Kingman District 4 Supervisor, Don Martin. He had his first meeting with all of us yesterday, and just wanted to come and say we've worked so well together, you know, over the past four years, and looking forward to the next four years. I thought it would be a great idea, and I would just come to suggest, maybe we get together and we have a Kingman Day, where we take, you know, a day, we schedule a part of a day to get all of our elected officials, our two county Kingman Supervisors together, our city manager, the county manager, and we identify all those things that we want to collaborate on, whether that's our shared water advocacy at the Capitol. Been reading about the transit center that the Kingman Council is looking to do. Just to let you know, late last year, our prior council, we voted as our board to put up for sale many surplus properties, one of those being the 11-acre parcel where the animal control building and the county library is. I think there's some options there, if that's of interest to the city, whether it be a long-term lease under statute or something like that, the land release at the airport. I mean, there's just so many things that we can collaborate on and stay strong on. So if that's something of interest, you know, I'd love to be a part of that, and certainly looking forward to being part of the Tri-City Council meeting, as I have been. But just want to say thank you for your partnership. The future looks bright in Kingman, and together, I think that we can be a big part of, you know, some great things for the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lingenfelter. Item number 3, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, items A through F, anything that needs to be pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion approving our consent agenda as stated?
Still moved.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 4, under Old Business, 4A, Ordinance Number 1957, Urban Camping. This item is an update to the city's current camping prohibition ordinance, Ordinance 1957. Provides law enforcement clear standards on the enforcement of urban camping while ensuring constitutional rights are not violated. With the recent Supreme Court decision in Grants Pass versus Johnson, municipal camping ordinances are now enforceable. Staff recommends approval. Carl, turn some time over to you.
Yes, sir. If you guys recall, October 15th or so, we had a pretty good discussion about this ordinance and what the council was looking for. You had a few suggestions to make some modifications to what I had drafted, mostly directed towards the residential private property section, when we talked about that intermittent camping on somebody's residential property. Council is really looking towards having, not having it out in front, having it behind a site-restricted fence in the backyard, make sure it's in compliance with all the setbacks, so we addressed that. Overall, this is basically cleaning up the various areas within the city code, some of the zoning ordinances that direct uses of camping and non-camping. This is an effort to get it all consolidated into one area, to make that information really clear, consistent for law enforcement, so they will be able to enforce that as they need to enforce it. It goes into pretty good detail about explaining what camping is, the various prohibitions, some of the exceptions, and some of the procedures. So ultimately, the only changes since we last looked at it were those modifications just to have it behind a site-restricted fence and those setback requirements. I don't have a plan to do a whole presentation, because ultimately, not much has changed unless you have some specific questions, but I think that's what I have for you tonight.
Carl, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Carl? Okay. Can we have a motion then approving Ordinance Number 1957, Urban Camping?
Sure, move.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion does carry. Item number 4B, under Old Business, Shared Co-Work Space Partnership, Advancing Economic Growth and Innovation. An update on the City of Kingman's Economic Development Department in partnership with WAVE, CTED, and Mojave Community College's Small Business Development Center, SBDC. Shared Co-Work Space. The intent of the project is to foster economic growth, support business, and enhance vocational training. Parcel 311-16-003B has been identified as a strategic location to accommodate partner needs and align with Kingman's anticipated growth near new Interstate 40 interchanges. Counsel discretion. Terry, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Thank you for being here and serving our community as you do. Over the last few months, economic development has taken you guys on tours of the Nomadic Center in Lake Havasu. While we were doing that, we were, we are here today to revisit the Shared Co-Work Space initiative that we had originally started speaking with you about a couple of months ago. In doing this, we have tried to aim to give various answers to the questions that you guys posed the last time we were before you, and some of the questions that came up during the tour. Tonight, we have with us our partners, Mojave Community College, Dr. Stacy Klippenstein is here, as well as Amy West from Western Arizona Vocational Education. She'll be speaking in just a few moments, but we'll move forward on here. Studies indicate that the development of a shared co-work space in Kingman presents a strategic opportunity to bolster local entrepreneurship and stimulate economic growth. Such a space, its significant advantages are designed to address key challenges that are experienced by small businesses and startups, that while they face, while they are starting up their businesses, they're trying to foster innovation and collaboration. So co-working spaces act as a business incubator, offering essential resources at lower costs than traditional office spaces. This enables startups to focus on the growth and innovations that they have. Many entrepreneurs face challenges such as inadequate workspaces, limited access to resources, and professional isolation. A co-working space directly mitigates these issues, providing a professional environment that enhances productivity and connectivity. Establishing a coworker's co-working space supports Kingman's economic development goals, fostering a thriving entrepreneurial ecosystem, and a long-term growth that sparks collaboration, partnerships, mentorships, and creativity. This prepares Kingman's future workforce by equipping students and workers with skills, opportunities, and connections for long-term successes. The shared co-work space will serve a diverse group of people, from freelancers, remote workers, startups, entrepreneurs, small businesses, nonprofits, other professionals such as legal or accountants, therapists, or photographers, any of these type of individuals. Kingman's Industrial Park remains a hub of activity. We have been focused on marketing the availability of the private businesses, privately-owned businesses out there, and helping with those leases, getting them out there, and working on selling our remaining parcels that we have. While these efforts actively support business expansion and attraction, the industrial park, the physical space for large-scale new developments is becoming more limited. This initiative aligns perfectly with Kingman's Industrial Park, supporting its ongoing growth by providing administrative and collaborative spaces for businesses, and as a physical space for large-scale developments become more limited, the co-working space offers a complementary solution that enhances leasing activities and strengthens Kingman's economic landscape. The co-location of WAVE and SBDC along with the economic development staff fosters a dynamic ecosystem where collaboration is seamless. Entrepreneurs, students, and business professionals can share resources and expenses, accelerating their problem-solving ability and innovation. They benefit from a centralized location that enhances communication, reduces travel time, and creates a one-stop resource for business development. WAVE brings to the table a central location, for WAVE, this brings to the table a central location that serves both of the high schools equally, and makes it accessible for all of Kingman's students. While this enhances the connecting these students to workforce training that is available through apprenticeships and hands-on learning experiences, and it also provides exposure for those students to entrepreneurial ships. For SBDC, it's more about the businesses that they bring resources to the table for. They provide direct support for the entrepreneurs and the small businesses, streamline access to resources, networks, and support, and collaborative, collaboration opportunities to drive innovation. So there's proven benefits for co-working spaces. This project represents a true partnership, leveraging the strengths of WAVE and SBDC. There are multiple studies that share common benefits found in shared co-work spaces. Some of those benefits are the cost effectiveness for startups and small businesses by sharing resources such as high-speed Internet, technical equipment, 3D printers, meeting rooms, conference facilities, all without the expense of a long-term lease. And some of those leases don't always provide in all of these or any of these type of resources. The proven success in rural communities has been proven, and one such example is 20 Fathom in Traverse City, Michigan, which supported 41 startups that have generated more than $34 million in private investments in their community. This also encourages innovation and sustained economic growth. Co-working environments facilitate interactions among diverse professionals, leading to potential partnerships and new business opportunities. This provides business professionals access to talent, skills, and business development resources, and 82% of those people that were involved in shared co-work spaces have expanded their professional network opportunities within that co-work space, enabling the businesses to form cross-sector partnerships and elevate their ventures to the next level, things that they did not anticipate being able to experience. So what can we learn from the Lake Havasu's Nomadic Co-Work Space? By incorporating this modern design elements, advanced technology, and collaborative spaces, Lake Havasu's Nomadic Co-Work Space has become a hub for creative professionals and remote workers. Kingman's shared co-work space will adopt these features, ensuring it meets the needs of a modern workforce and maintains a competitive edge. Key features are the aesthetics that are light, bright, and modern, cutting-edge design with latest technology, access to podcast rooms, privacy pods, small group conference calling, video editing tools, and areas that they can collaborate in. By incorporating these features, we ensure that Kingman's shared co-work space is cutting edge and built to meet the needs of the modern workforce. In addition to that, the median age advantage that Kingman has over Havasu is that our median age of our worker is 41 years old, where Havasu is 54. So, some more Kingman's competitive edges are that we have a similar structure of the economic and community needs and supporting small businesses. But the proposed Route 66, I'm so sorry. In 2011, let me back up just a moment. In 2011, Mojave County did a target industry analysis report. That report indicated that Kingman had the most opportunities for growth in targeted industry clusters. The clusters include arts and entertainment, aviation, energy, healthcare services, manufacturing, and transportation logistics. So while we have similar economic and needs for boosting our entrepreneurial ships, the studies have shown that the most successful ones in rural areas are actually closely related to all of these different industries and in and near residential areas, which our location that we're looking at provides. At this point in time, I'm going to bring Amy up, who's going to explain the next couple slides for you.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing us to present again. Basically, what spurred this conversation last spring was we have some carryover funding that we want to allocate. So we worked on a district-wide master plan, some of you may have attended those meetings. From there, we came up with a plan that indicated WAVE would really like to have some of its own space. We don't have our own classrooms, we partner with people, we have a space in Havasu for a culinary campus, our offices are at the county building, we're kind of everywhere. So that kind of fostered this conversation. And from there, with our district-wide master plan, they identified Kingman as the first location where we should start, basically saying, Kingman has a lot of things already happening, a lot of good things already happening, and so, starting in Kingman made sense. We already have a little bit of a footprint in Havasu with our culinary facility, and then from there, they had mentioned cycling down to Bullhead and down to Parker with some other investments. So, what we did after those district-wide master plan meetings is we started to hear from partners about, hey, what do you think about this idea? Hey, what do you think about that idea? And that's where we got to today, where we have the community college, we have the city, and we have WAVE, having these conversations. So, at the end of our district-wide master planning, we had some contingency funds left. So we decided to utilize those to create the drawings and some of the information that we're presenting tonight. We gathered input from MCC, Economic Development, City of Kingman staff, and WAVE staff members. This is a conceptual drawing, just showing you what is possible. If you notice in the upper left-hand corner, you will see the SBDC space. MCC worked with us, kind of what they'd like to see in that type of space. The bottom left, you will see in the orange area, that is WAVE space, things like classroom space, offices for our staff, training lab, again, all very flexible, things that can be utilized for different ways. In the upper right-hand corner, you see economic development. This includes staff offices along with those co-work spaces that could be rented and utilized for income. And then the darker blue in the center are all those spaces where you can share things, like a conference room. You know, nobody's in their conference room every day, nobody's in one of those phone booths every day, nobody's doing a professional development or a training every day. So you share those things, so you can maximize the use of those facilities by multiple partners. The offices and the layout is kind of designed like this to foster collaboration. A lot of the designs that we looked at were very open, where people could get up, walk down the hallway, go see that person that has some expertise, like one of the things I would love to know more about is marketing and, you know, social media and YouTube. Well, if they have somebody renting over there that has that, we now are in the same location and we have a relationship. So that's kind of why this was designed the way it was. And then, we did, how do I change the next slide? Oh, there you go. Thank you. There you go. We did look, we talked two different locations. So this is the location that we looked at that's on Route 66. It's a little bit larger property that the city has. You can see the layout there. The building that we're talking about is about 16,000 square feet, includes all of those shared co-work spaces, shared facility spaces, office spaces, classroom spaces. The other location that we talked about was downtown. The other location that we talked about was downtown, and this was another one that was brought up. You can see that that's a little bit large for this area, but everything is moldable, right? Like, we can move things around and, and we don't know what this is going to look like in the future. So these are all conceptual, they're ideas, and we are hoping that the city council is happy with what we've brought to you so that you have some things to move forward with and look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
So the Route sixty-six location benefits, all the economic, the proposed location enhances collaboration by housing all of the economic development staff under one roof. Strategically positioned between the airport and downtown and future areas of growth, including the new interchanges, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing, which will include both retail and industrial facilities. The shared resources and co-located agencies will reduce costs while creating a one-stop resource hub for workforce training, business development, and community engagement. So the project costs, when we took a look at this, they ranged actually from three hundred and ten, not three hundred and twenty-five, to three seventy-five per square foot for a stick bill. These numbers were supported by projects that recently have been finished or have started in Mojave County. The required size that we're looking at, again, Amy gave you the number, it's sixteen thousand square feet to house all of these agencies together. WAVE has also proposed a potential ownership agreement, is something that they would consider. And we did receive the appraisal for this property within the last week, and it's been appraised at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you can see, sixteen thousand square feet at three hundred and fifty, so we kind of took the middle of the road on this one, equals five million six hundred thousand. Estimated engineering costs actually average about seven point one percent, that equals six hundred thousand, that brings us to six million two hundred thousand. And with WAVE's generous partnership of donating five million dollars in funds towards this project, the accounting for, after WAVE's contribution, the remaining estimated cost is reduced to just one point two million dollars. We have also taken into consideration several different potential funding sources for this project, including grant applications, federal appropriations, and the possible sale of a building. We are committed to exploring and pursuing all available avenues to minimize out-of-pocket expenses and maximize funding opportunities. While we remain optimistic, it's important to note that we cannot secure any of these until a formal commitment is, has been made. So in conclusion, the City of Kingman Council, you guys have made some really strategic, difficult decisions over the last six months, and, well, you guys for your term, I shouldn't just limit it to that, so I apologize. But the proposed shared co-work space in Kingman presents a transformative opportunity to support entrepreneurs, encourage collaboration, and stimulate economic development. By partnering with WAVE and SBDC, the space will become a dynamic hub for innovation, workforce development, and community engagement. Its central location is significant for economic and community benefit. One of the partners that we anticipate being in there are nonprofits as well. That is definitely a community benefit, along with what we bring here for the entrepreneurs. It's a golden opportunity partnership with WAVE and SBDC, and we couldn't be more grateful for their offerings. It's a dynamic approach to economic development. But as part of all these efforts, we started some conversations with ALO Fiber. And if you guys went down to Nomadic, you may have noticed that ALO Fiber is one of their partners. We started talking to them about that, and what we found, and what they expressed, as a valued corporate partner in the region, they have expressed a strong interest in supporting this project by potentially providing complementary internet services, including gig internet, Wi-Fi six routers, and necessary construction services to install all this equipment. In exchange for co-branding opportunities within the facility, while the details of this partnership have not truly been realized or finalized, we are very hopeful, and we look, we look forward to the next level of conversations with them. We just appreciate the time that we can come and bring this project before you, and that's my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Wow, we are a quiet bunch tonight.
Okay. Terry, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. We do have a member of the public that would like to comment on this, Mr. Durant, Tom Duranzo, if you'd like to come up.
Tom Duranzo, I'm a member of the WAVE board, as you well know in any elected board. There are various opinions on things sometimes, so all I'm saying is that this is a great project, a great opportunity, as Terry said and as Amy said. We are in an imperative mode to get into another office, and we are interested in the partnerships. There will be concerns if there's too many contingencies that could delay the opportunities to do this. Frankly, we never know what the legislature is going to do, and we have a fund balance that we've been saving for a number of years to do this type of project. And there's nothing that would stop a legislature from sweeping fund balances. We have that great privilege of having a fund balance that we could use on this thing. That's in lieu of going into debt, or a bond, or something like that, that, because J-TED districts do have the ability to do that, but we would prefer not to do it that way. And something that you guys should discuss is, on any locational decision, that aligns with your just-passed general plan and the objectives that are contained in that general plan. So those are just some other considerations, as if there aren't enough considerations in this. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Tom. Actually, Tom, I might have a question, you might be able to answer, or Terry. Just for knowledge, the Lake Havasu Nomadic Center, how big is that facility?
It's about nine to ten thousand square feet, isn't it?
About ten thousand, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's located specifically in their downtown area.
Right.
They chose that for a number of purposes, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering about that. Okay, counsel, any discussion on this item? Yes, Councilwoman Staley.
I, I wonder if we could get Tina Moline to come up here and talk about financing this one point two million and what that might look like. You're the expert.
You have all the answers, Tina.
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Staley. So we have talked a little bit about what it could look like if we financed, and so it depends on the term, of course. But we were thinking that it would be just about seventy to eighty thousand dollars in debt service payments if we were to finance it, I believe, over a ten, over a twenty-year period.
Seventy thousand a year. And obviously, it's not going to make that much money renting out those spaces. I can't imagine.
So I don't have the data on that. I know that Terry and the team have talked to the Lake Havasu office. I wouldn't be comfortable up here sharing that we're going to generate enough revenue to cover the debt service and any sort of operating costs.
Sure.
But I know that they have had those conversations with the Lake Havasu office, and I don't know if Terry wants to come up and speak to what that looks like, but certainly, we would need to be generating the revenue to pay for that.
Okay, one other question is, what would your recommendation be for finding this one point two million dollars? Would it be something that we could handle within our budget? Do we need to go out for a bond, get a loan? What, what is your recommendation? Really? I mean.
Join the conversation, Manager Walsh.
No, thank you. And if I may, a lot of the discussions at this point in this process has been identifying the needs, you know, working with the three partners to identify what those needs are, working on looking at, you know, okay, a shared workspace, SBDC, the WAVE portion and Economic Development, and identifying all of those. At this point, the conversations have been, you know, the city has the land to be able to put forward on this project. We've not, at this point, identified a way to fund any, any shortfalls or anything like that. One idea that has been floated, you know, there's been discussion with the Five Nineteen Bill and the possibility of that sale, and, and if that were to go, if that, if that were to sell, we would have that, those funds there that could possibly be put towards this project. So that, that's been one of the ideas that's been floated. At this point, that funding source has not identified itself, we've not found that source at this point. But as, as Director Moline mentioned, you know, there, there are those options, the problem with, with financing that is, is that payment that then comes from the general fund to get it going, so.
Okay, I, so I'm asking because it sounds like what you went from us tonight is to tell you, move forward, or we're not interested in this project. And then if we all agree that we're interested in going forward, these are all the options that are on the board for taking on that, the responsibility of that one point two million. So that's, I'm trying to get a better idea of what we're agreeing to today.
And really, I'd say, what, the intent of tonight was to, to share, you know, the status, how far we've come, where we're at in, in the process. Really, the next step is, okay, work towards, okay, can we, can we identify funding source? If not, you know, what other options are out there? Basically, the next step would be to bring those options back to council. So, yeah, we're not, we're not asking you to say, hey, write that check for one point two. It's basically, basically what we're looking at is, we're happy with where we're at right now, please continue to move forward with the project. And, you know, there's, there's a number of ways to look at it. I know, as Mr. Duranzo had mentioned, they have the funding available to do a big portion of this project. There's also other ways to look at it, you know, the, the city puts forward the land, you know, perhaps it's a matter of looking at the operational expenses of the building, the city providing that. You know, we have a lot more resources when it comes to facility management and that, that could be a possibility. So, so that part is still out there as far as trying to come up with what that actual cost is and how that agreement between the three partners looks as we get to that. But this was really an update to show what we've come up with, and, and if council's happy, we'll continue down that road and try and find solutions to those questions.
Thank you for that clarification.
And may I add?
Yes, Terry.
A comment. Two things. Nomadic is making money off of, they are paying, they're self-sustaining. However, I don't believe that there is debt payoff in that, in those numbers. And also, Dr. Klippenstein reminded me that in our earliest conversations, that they are willing to prepay their lease for quite a few years based on the space, so that that would equate to money in the pocket to put towards the construction. And we can delve into what that looks like in firmer numbers later.
Don't run away yet, Terry. Don't. We have multiple questions.
Sure.
You mentioned that the Nomadic Center is paying for itself. Does that include power, lights, keeping the lights on, all that?
It is.
Okay.
And they're, it includes their software and the security elements that they run. There's two different companies that they use. One facilitates the electronic version and payments and that type of thing. The other portion of it runs their security, and that covers all those payments.
Well, and of course, something simple as maintenance and janitorial also.
It does. It includes all of those.
That's all included.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, my question, you touched a little bit on it, was what was going to be the investment of MCC? I, I see that, you know, they have a space, our investment of the property at seven hundred and fifty thousand, we've got the five million from WAVE, C-TED, and so I wasn't sure if part of that five million was also inclusive of some of MCC's SBDC money, or I, I'm interested in hearing what the investment from MCC would be.
Mayor Watkins, members of the board, I'm Stacy Klippenstein, the proud president of Mojave Community College, here to answer the question. The, the idea for us would be a third-party potential lease style of agreement. Our space would be minimal within that, whatever the square footage would come out to. One of the ideas with that would, we would look at paying whatever that going rate would be on a square footage cost for rental back. So whatever that dollar amount would be per square foot, we would look at that entering into an agreement on that space. One of the ideas we have would be, could it be a larger upfront that would cover us for so many years within that, that can give you that upfront cash flow? But you may want to look at it from two different perspectives, either that one, or say, well, what if we put in the contract over a period of time, let's say, three years, we want to readjust based on new going rates? Then you would get a little bit more, so to speak, right? It all depends on how you want to approach us with that. We would love it free, of course, just to let you know that. But actually, we want to be a partner with it, and we thought, instead of trying to be an upfront, one of the other owners of the space, and then you have three owners, and how all that plays out is more coming in from a lease-style agreement on that square footage space, and we would work whatever you would believe would be the best for that. Seventy thousand, eighty thousand a year, maybe not, to help cover the full, whatever loan debt that would be. But I think there would be a good going rate option for us to be able to look at paying that on an annual basis, or upfront in a larger scale, or larger lump sum.
Okay. Yeah, I do, I mean, I, I like the idea of the public-private partnership, certainly grateful for the WAVE-C-TED program contributing as much as they, they are willing to contribute. So I, going forward, will be very interested and invested in what those numbers look like and, and how that, how that agreement moves forward. I, I do believe in this location, I do, I, I know we're going to have some decisions to make in the budget planning session with Five Nineteen Bill, so, I mean, it's, it's a perfect opportunity to start to have those discussions, but I appreciate your input and, and your willingness to also partner with the city, so much appreciation.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Staley. I just wanted to let you know that, of course, I'm saying this, I still need board approval on any item that would come forward. So in case my board trustees are listening, yes, we would be bringing forward this to them, but we are, everybody is very excited about this partnership. Amy West and her team have done a great job behind the scenes, as well as Terry and Bennett. So we're here to support and here to participate because it's a valuable asset to the community and to us as well, and to C-TED WAVE, so.
Well, it looks like we have a lot of discussing. Thank you.
Doctor, thank you too. I just want, I echo what Vice Mayor said. Thanks for all your offers to, to make this happen, so.
I just wanted to add one other piece, if that's okay, to what we were talking about. One of the board members from WAVE did ask if there would be an opportunity for us to purchase a portion of that property versus it staying Kingman property, City of Kingman property, so that may be a potential revenue piece as well, and it's not the whole property, it's maybe a quarter, I would say. So when you mentioned the appraisal, I just want to throw that in there.
Thank you, Amy. Councilwoman Walker?
Yeah, I had two questions when we started, the one got answered, I was wondering what MCC was going to bring to the table, and I think the lease agreement, like he's talking, sounds good. But my second one was, they presented two locations, nobody's really talked about that. What do we feel?
I like the location on Route sixty-six.
Okay.
Over by Lewis Kingman Park, to give you an idea, to answer your question right off the bat.
I like it because it's more central to the two high schools, I like that, but, you know, Kingman government, most of our government is downtown.
It is.
Excuse me, downtown. So that was my concern.
But the other location was Five Nineteen.
Correct.
So that.
Parking lot of Five Nineteen.
Yes, it would use parking lot, and of course, then if we wanted to sell that property, put those proceeds towards this.
Okay.
So that's, all these are all things to float, you know, to consider. Counsel, well, I guess what is your temperature on this? Well, I guess, what is your temperature on this?
I'm in favor of the Route 66.
Okay. Well, and let's move on forward too. I mean, because staff wants to know how to move forward. Are we interested in pursuing this? Counselor Saly?
Yeah, I think to answer your question, 519 bill, I don't think makes sense unless we tear that old building down and put this new one up and then use the parking lot accordingly and have that extra space. Otherwise, it just isn't right. So I think you would have to tear that building down to do that. But I've always thought this was a great idea. I was really impressed by the Nomadic Center in Lake Havasu. I think that we definitely have the small business startups that could use this and certainly being able to bring people together to strengthen their business plan or strengthen their skill set just would be a win for our community. So I definitely support this in moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dykens? I'm putting you on the spot, Jim.
Oh, thanks. Are you looking for an actual motion then?
No, no, we're not going, we, this actually, as Manager Walsh said, basically, the staff needs direction.
I agree with everybody's opinion. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for growth and for education and development of small business. I was very impressed when I took the tour down in Havasu. I think I'm all in favor of moving forward with this and seeing what we can come out with numbers on.
And location, of course, Route 66 location?
I'm in favor of that over the other location.
Vice Mayor? You already said you're in favor, so I think, I think we're all, Tim, does that give you enough direction what you need?
Perfect, thank you. We'll continue to work with the group and basically our next step will be working out the details of those agreements and seeing how that all falls, so.
Okay. Mr. Duranso, you'd like to have, make another comment? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Tom Duranso again. I would just say that, you know, what Mrs. West's diagram up there that our consultant worked on, that's the ultimate dream of everybody. I mean, another option could be that we phase pieces of that in, you know, we could phase our part of it in and a minimal part of some of the other partners. And then as time goes and you get more money and you don't have to go into debt for it, you could add to those things and make contingencies in the building or in the footprint to move forward when you have more money and you can expand it. I mean, you know, Bennett doesn't have a staff of 14 people or anything right now, but, you know, you could phase the thing in and at least get some of it started and that would take pressure off your fiscal issues, so.
Thank you, Tom. No, it's a very good point. Thank you. Okay. I think we're, anyway, moving on to new business number five, 5A, discussion on renaming Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange to Rattlesnake Wash Traffic Interchange. Council requested information to consider the possible renaming of Rancho Santa Fe Interchange to Rattlesnake Wash Interchange. Staff has reached out to ADOT to understand the process and will share those findings. Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I did reach out and I spoke with ADOT. They would have no problem with us changing the name. Actually, you know, one of the, looking at the request and considering it, one of the initial thoughts was, well, if we wait and they build the interchange, we can change the name of the road after, that'll have to, you know, then they'll have to change the name of the interchange, which is one method of doing it. The problem with that is now we've got a number of signs along I-40 that would need to be changed out. So speaking with Anthony at ADOT, he spoke with some of his higher-ups as well, and he said, at this point, there would not be an issue in changing that name. I did also speak with Dale Wiggins, who is the engineer for it. He, you know, related costs, you know, there's always a cost, right? Especially with this project, seems like there's always a cost. But I talked with him, he said that there would be some change or some cost with the change because they'd have to change some of the signing and striping sheets, but he felt that that would be a minimal cost that could be, basically could be built into, could be absorbed by their contingency and post-construction costs. So it would not be an additional cost to the city. We could factor that into some of the contingency. So definitely a possibility if that's the will of the council. What Anthony did request is if that is the direction we'd like to go, he'd like to see basically a resolution and then a request from council to ADOT to make that change, so.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Walsh. Council questions for Tim?
I just have a concern.
Your Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
And Counselor Walker?
I talked with the developer, the original developer. I was on council when this changed from Rattlesnake to Rancho Santa Fe. So I made a call and said, what do you guys think? And they, they did not like the name Rattlesnake because it's unfriendly. And that they were not against a name change now, but they don't, wouldn't really care for it to go back to Rattlesnake. So I think if we're going to do this, we need to get input from the property owners, developers, maybe even the citizens, just the council decision.
Basically, a survey?
Survey.
Putting out a survey and maybe putting some suggested names? I know you, you had another name that you had suggested?
One name that came up during the general plan meeting by one of the participants was Charles Lindbergh Way because Charles Lindbergh was here at the airport when it was an Army Air Force Base, or Army Air Base.
Okay.
So there could be other suggestions out there, but we could get the developer back in here and ask them, but what I heard from them was, it was an unfriendly name and they didn't want that on their subdivision is when they changed it before. And that was in, I believe, 2010, we changed that.
Okay. I mean, I understand that viewpoint and I'm open to all suggestions. I, being native Arizona, and I, like most of us are.
Yeah.
I could represent Arizona, but I can see where.
I personally don't have a problem, but I knew they were involved with the name change before. That's why I reached out to them and I think they need to be involved.
Right. Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would like to know, you said ADOT said it should be absorbed by contingencies. I'm, we've had experience with that agency before and it's not been favorable to me as to the cost for changing this, changing that, you know, change order comes to mind. I would either like them to agree that this would be absorbed and we could have a definitive answer that this is absorbed and it's not going to cost us any money, or, and I would like to know how much it costs. I mean, the name, I'd like to also, you know, have citizen input, that would be great. I'm not one way or another, I'm just concerned about cost.
If I may, Vice Mayor, the ADOT, basically, they referred me back to the project engineer, which is AECOM. So that's, Dale Wiggins is the project engineer for AECOM. And talking with him, I tried, exactly like you said, I tried pinning him down to a number. He had indicated that he would need to go to their subconsultant that they used for the signing and striping plans in order to get a quote from them. So he was hesitant on giving me a number, but he did indicate that, you know, with the project, we had a number, you know, a certain amount for contingency and then also a certain number for post, or post-engineering costs. And he felt comfortable that it would fall within those.
And Manager Walsh, with all due respect, I hear what you're saying, but we haven't even started the project. So I, again, just, I want, I want a commitment. I'm having a trouble with this. So I'm not in support with this as it's presented. Maybe if it comes back and we have more information and more of a commitment, but as I stated before, we have not even started this project, so.
No, I can work with him and get a quote on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, Sean, welcome.
Sorry, got in a little late on this one. I hope I'll get to everything I want to go over coming up. As far as the name, if it's going to cost us money to change a name, I'm totally against that. If the citizens want to change it, they're going to have to know there's going to be a cost accrued in that. I just, I'm comfortable with Rancho Santa Fe. We're in the desert. We're, Rattlesnake Wash, I don't agree with either, as Keith said. Why are we even having this discussion, to be honest with you?
Okay.
Just my opinion.
Nope. That's why you're here, Sean. We appreciate it. Okay. So noted. Counselor Ward?
I like the Rattlesnake Wash. It is at Rattlesnake Wash. I mean, why would you change the name, the exit, from a sign that's been right there at that wash the whole time? I don't get, I, I don't understand why they changed it to start with. If it were me, I'd say Rattlesnake Wash.
Okay. Thank you. I really like the ideas we've already discussed of getting citizen input on it. So Counselor Saly, Counselor Dykens, anything?
I have to learn how to push the button. I agree with Councilman Savage. If we're putting out money, you're talking about a survey. We have another thing on the agenda, talking about a survey that's going to cost a lot of money. You know, for the past 14 years, this whole thing, according to your 2010, has been Santa Fe, Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. I would have thought sometime in those 14 years, this might have come up as a discussion matter. To me, I think we're wasting money, we're wasting time, and I totally agree with the comments about ADOT. No offense to ADOT in any manner, but I just see other delays coming just because of a name change. So I'm not in favor of any change.
Well, and actually, Counselor Saly, I know, a while back, you had mentioned, anything that we like, even with design plans, we were concerned about delays on doing, on that causing any delays in this project. And we don't want any delays, so I totally understand that, those viewpoints too. So Counselor Saly, anything more? Okay. We actually have a member of the public that would like to comment on this, Mr. Steve Smith. Would you like to come up?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Steve Smith. I'm a resident here in Kingman. The name is more than just a name, it is an impression. People drive past Rattlesnake Wash, Rattlesnake Wash, that's great. They drive by a neighborhood that says Rattlesnake. Very few people get warm fuzzies from a rattlesnake. It's just not, it doesn't evoke great, great things. Rancho Santa Fe, I believe the name came from a location in San Diego, which is filled with multimillion-dollar homes, immaculately groomed golf courses, a place that everybody would aspire to be. And I think that's helpful when you talk about an area that you want to, you want to have grow. So are you asking somebody to drive by and see Rattlesnake Wash or Rancho Santa Fe? And Santa Fe, New Mexico is another really fabulous place, if you've ever been there to visit. You want a good impression for here in Kingman. And I don't think, I'm sorry, but I don't think Rattlesnake Wash really puts it over.
No, Mr. Smith, we appreciate your input as part of representing the public. So Mr. Walsh, I think, of course, we had talked, surveys is something as simple as putting into a water or putting something on the website, on our city website. So there's minimal cost would be one idea. Can you give us some input, our feedback on that?
Sure. We've got a number, as was mentioned, we've got a number of surveys, we'd be happy to put another survey in. We're currently working on a survey for the trash, solid waste service, one pickup versus two pickups. So that one's going out later in the agenda. We've got another survey that we'll be considering on revenue generation. We just completed a citizen survey. So I'm a little concerned about survey fatigue for our residents. But I think ultimately, we will do however council would like. I think the question is, is really, does council wish to make a name change? If the council wishes to make, one, does council wish to make a name change? Yes, you know, that will be indicative. If council does elect to make a name change, then, okay, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to have that citizen survey? So I think it's almost a two-part.
Sure.
So my recommendation would be to open it up for a motion and see which direction it falls. If we'd like to look into a name change, we can continue, I can reach out to, again, to AECOM, get a price on what that would cost, and then we can work on a survey to see what's out there. If we don't, then we can leave it Rancho and continue that way. So just kind of put it out there.
Well, as Counselor Dykens and also Counselor Savage mentioned, obviously, if there's any increase in cost, that's a big, big concern, even if something as simple as Counselor Dykens mentioned with doing a survey. If we're taking care of a survey in-house, is there much of a cost?
So we, I mean, there is some cost associated with it, you know, obviously, what we would likely do is similar to what we're doing with the solid waste is, it would be available on the website. We would issue mailers in our, in our utility bills, but those utility bills, you know, a lot of people are on electronic billing. So we basically get the word out, put it up on the message boards, put it on our websites and all that to connect and put in their input on what that survey would be. But, I mean, it's fairly minimal cost doing it that way.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, Counselor?
I would like to keep this as simple as possible because I think we're wasting too much of our precious time on something as superficial as this. Keep the name where it's at. I really don't think there's that much, as far as citizens worried about the name, as far as getting the interchange in. That's our primary goal. And I, in my opinion, I would just keep it the same, just move on, and we can move on to the next item.
Okay, that sounds like a motion. Is that what you're making?
That's my motion, yes, sir.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those, is it, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those against?
Nay.
Okay. I think the motion now did carry four to three, correct?
No.
No?
It sounded like the motion to leave it the same failed.
Failed, okay.
By a vote of four to three.
Okay. I wasn't looking this way, did you? Anyway.
I was a nay.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we get the information that we need from ADOT.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second as far as tabling this discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. Moving on to 5B, ordinance number 1959 and resolution number 5542, license code update. Staff has completed an update to Chapter 8, Articles 1, 1.5, and 3, taxation and licenses of the Kingman City Code. This section of the code specifically addresses our business licensing process and requirements. Updates are to bring the code in compliance with changes in statute and provide uniformity across the code. A complete list of the changes are included in the backup. Staff recommends approval.
Carl? Yeah, it's me, unfortunately for this one. I have had some minimal involvement in this. Ms. Schreiber in my office has been working on this, but unfortunately, we have the creeping crud running through my office. I have several people out. So if I can handle it, I'll handle it. I have questions for our city clerk and our finance director, possibly. So if you look at the summary sheet, I don't have a presentation, the summary sheet goes through the list of various changes that are being, that are taking place. A lot of them are just cleaning up some language, redirecting who's responsible for the business licenses, which will be the billing department, changing or trying to deal with the issues with special events and the vendors involved with that. If we look at the ordinance itself, we can kind of go through that there's some changes. We can see that we removed a couple sections that were specifically involved with TPT and adjustment of TPT. Obviously, that is not an option for council at this point. I believe when those ordinances were put in, that was an effort to try and address the initiative or the proposition that was on the ballot to try and see if we could modify or influence some of the potential outcome of what was going on with that situation. And again, as we go through, there's some, just some modifications of some definitions, an updating of the hearing process for any denials or revocations of the permits or the business license, trying to think if there's anything else specific. I guess, how about we go, if you have some specific questions, might be able to answer those.
Counsel Carl did in his summary on the paperwork that he has sent out to us, and it's online also. Council Carl, Carl did in his summary on the paperwork that he has sent out to us, and it's online also, um, does state all the different changes, basically minor tweaks, also falling in line with state code.
Correct.
So any questions on this subject with, for Carl? Okay. Carl, I think you're good, so.
I was just gonna make a comment.
Oh yes, Carl.
When we look at the, the suggested motion, we should probably do, approve the resolution first.
Okay.
And then there'll be a, the resolution is declaring it a, a public record, a public record for adopting that, and then you approve the motion or the ordinance, which then.
Okay, so basically two different motions then.
Please.
Okay. So if there's no other questions for, for Mr. Cooper? So can we have a motion then for resolution number 5542 for the license code, licenses code update?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, of course, we need a motion for ordinance number 1959 concerning licenses code update.
Shall move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on, under new business, item 5C, general plan amendment discussion. The recently approved general plan update increased the requirements for a major plan amendment. These changes have proven more onerous than expected. Staff is seeking council's direction on amending the requirements for a major plan amendment to be more in line with requirements of similar cities and the county. Staff seeks council dis, dis, direction. Welcome Jason.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if we were gonna pick on you or on Tim.
Thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So tonight before you, we were actually asking for some direction, uh, to go back and take a look at our general plan as well as, uh, a portion of the municipal code. Uh, when the general plan was adopted, uh, and ultimately ratified this last November, uh, going back and taking, looking at it, we're looking at some areas that it's actually still in conflict with the municipal code. And what we've determined is that, uh, there's been some changes. Uh, some changes that took place at the state level, uh, that was back in 2022, uh, and 2023, which allowed general plan amendments to be done and heard within a 12-month period as opposed to within the same calendar year. And so that requires an update at the very minimum to our municipal code, uh, to address that. But there's also conflicting information in our municipal code and the way the general plan was adopted. The general plan was adopted with its own implementation schedule, how it, how it looked at major amendments as well as minor amendments. And what we've determined in looking at the previous general plan, the general plan didn't have an implementation process within it. We believe that the, uh, the consultant incorporated it without the knowledge of knowing that it was actually already in the municipal code. But essentially it created additional conflicts, so we have, we wanna go back and clean up. And then the third one really is looking at the, the acreage thresholds and whether or not we wanna align it with Mojave County or some of the other jurisdictions or to create our own acreage threshold. So the, the screen before you, uh, currently in, in our major amendments, uh, in, in the municipal code itself, we are limited to doing a major general plan amendment, uh, with 25 acres. So anything over, anything 25 acres or, or greater requires a major amendment. Um, with that, on top of that, the general plan as adopted, uh, for the same type of category says we're limited to 60 acres, so we have a, a conflict there. When we look at growth within the city of Kingman and we look at what types of projects that are forthcoming, these acreage limitations are fairly restrictive. It's, it would really impose additional, uh, development standards or, or burdensome standards upon a developer that's wishing to forthcoming and do development within the city of Kingman. So we looked at some of the areas, and so Mojave County has very broad discretion. Uh, they're, they're a county agency, which, of course, that does account for part of that. So they have a, an 1,800 acre threshold, it's quite large, it really just addresses energy-related projects. Anything less than that, the county has the discretion to, to use as a minor amendment. Um, when we look at Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu is a different type of environment, they're fairly built out, they're, they're encompassed with state land around them or BLM land. And so within their platted areas, they limit it to five acres, outside of platted areas, they go to 40 acres. We went a little bit further, went up to Prescott and took a look at Prescott. Prescott, if you're changing from residential to commercial, it's 100 acres. If you're changing a residential density, uh, you just can't, uh, add additional 250 units, uh, to the overall density. And then coming from my old stomping grounds, I went back down to Surprise, and Surprise uses the actual section. So a section is considered 640 acres, and therefore, again, that's a developing community, they've got about 200 additional square miles that they can develop within their planning area. But Kingman also has quite a bit, uh, of opportunity for development. And so what we wanted to put before you this evening is, uh, some opportunities to really look at, as we go back and clean it up, how do we wanna look at it from an acreage threshold? So, um, leave the acreage thresholds the same based on what the voter ratification, uh, proposed and adjust amend the municipal code to a line, or amend the municipal code to a line as well as come back and take a look at the acreages that are similar to the, of the county, or choose our alternatives. And so that is the discussion that I'm putting before this evening for direction. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Jason?
Um, I don't even know where to start, I guess, what kind of project would come in and want to make that large of a change to our general plan where we're talking over 1,800 acres if we use the example of the county?
And, and again, these, these are just examples of the county. I, I don't think we're gonna have something of the 1,800 acres, I think that, that's going a bit far. I think that's perfect for, for a county. Um, if, if I were looking at it, I'd be looking at somewhere, somewhere between that 100 and 600. Uh, when I look at some of the acreages for potential future development around the San, Rancho Santa Fe area, when I look at Kingman crossings, when I look at the hospital area. So as those particular areas start to develop, if they were to seek a general plan amendment, uh, they would have to go through a major amendment to, to change the general plan on those designations.
Most of that is already in the general plan as commercial, the areas that we are targeting for that type of growth, isn't that correct?
No, the, I'll just speak to, let's say, the, the east side of the 40, uh, it has a mix, it's about, uh, 100 acres roughly, if I remember correctly, somewhere right. Um, it has a mix of open space, it has a mix of commercial, it has a mix of residential. Any of those three would require it to go through a major general plan amendment.
And what currently is that process?
So that process, they would have to make an application, they would go consistent with their, uh, concurrent with their change zone application. Uh, it would require a two-thirds majority vote of the council, and it takes upwards to about six months to a year, just depending on when they actually make their application and as they're going through that process.
Okay.
Can you go back to the page where it showed, oh yes, thank you. good points. I, I mean, I like Prescott's example, but what you just said, for example, on two major developments that we're trying to push through, I mean, if we can get the, in, if we can get, you know, work together with the hospital, that would change that.
That's correct.
So that means we'd need to bump that number up. Council, oh, Mr., Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. If I, if I may, just to, a, a little bit to add to what Jason has said. Um, generally, your, your major plan amendments are for, you know, a, a, a major, a major development. Usually you're looking, you know, a half section, a section or more of land that you're, you're looking to come in and, and develop it a certain way. Um, I'll tell you, some of the, the major plan amendments previously that I had seen, like in the county, you, you had, uh, Pruvot out in Golden Valley, you know, a major master plan community. Uh, you had Castle Arch north of town that was, I think, 2,100 acres or something like that. So, so, you know, a big development where you're bringing in retail, um, residential, you're, you're really changing the nature of, of that area is, is what you generally see a major plan amendment. This came to our attention, we had a developer looking at, at, at one of the, the interchanges, the, the rattlesnake, or Rancho Santa Fe interchange, my, um, the Rancho Santa Fe interchange, looking to do some development in that area. I, I think, wanna say it's around 130 acres, and that development i- in an area where it should, you know, where you would expect commercial up along a freeway, um, in that area, um, would have triggered a, a, a major plan amendment. So we, we said, hey, this, you know, in a scenario like this, this should typically be a, a minor plan amendment. So that, that's where this caught our eye and, and said, okay, we, we have something that we need to probably address here, so.
Well, that being the case, then it sounds like I, I like the idea, as you mentioned, like surprises, where it's a whole section, that in a lot of ways makes a lot more sen, makes a lot more sense. And it gives us enough size-wise to do it. Councillor Walker?
I agree.
Okay.
And, and if I can, just for clarification as well, the, a minor plan amendment still goes through, um, it'll still go through planning and zoning, they'll look at it, they'll make their recommendation, it'll still come to council, you'll make your recommendation. Then, you know, depending on that, i- if it gets approved, then you would likely see a rezone with it because whatever zoning's in place is, is probably whatever the previous land, uh, use was. So, so you would see both, you know, council will still have discretion on whether or not to approve those things, it's just the timing of the, of that process. A major plan amendment, you're looking, like you said, a six months to a year process to go through that. Where a minor plan amendment, you're looking probably closer to two to three months to, to get it before council for a decision.
So with what the city of Surprise is doing, would that deal with most of what we might encounter in, in the city of Kingman?
I, I think so.
I would say yes.
So that we could expedite the whole building process and not bog it down and?
Correct.
Okay. It sounds like the majority of council is, councillor Salley, comment.
Yeah, so I still, um, don't think I got clarification on what the difference is between the minor and the major other than time. What adds that extra time? And why would we want to rush through somebody trying to rezone 640 acres? Isn't the general plan set up that way with voter approval? Because that is how the community has decided they want the community to grow.
And, and really, I believe that's, that's a question, that, that really is why we're here, and that's the question for council is, is what is that threshold to, to really slow down the process to get a, a good in-depth look? Is it, is it, right now, our, our threshold is 60 acres?
60 acres.
So right now it's 60 acres, and, and that is what, what happened in, in this last general plan, uh, uh, update. Our, our, our consultant went through, she did a great job on going through it, she noticed that there wasn't a threshold. So in not having a threshold, added that threshold in there. We didn't catch it unfortunately, and, and, and that's why we're, we're bringing it to you right now. But the, the question is, is what is that threshold? At what point do we need to, you know, there's a number of amendments, um, that, you know, when you put a general plan together, y- you're, you're hoping this is the way it's gonna go, but, but you can never see the future, so it, it's a matter of, okay, we know we're gonna have to make some changes as we go along. Um, a major plan amendment is you're changing the nature of this area, you know, it's, it's definitely impacting the city and, and city operations, so we wanna make sure that we do it right and we go through it. So that really is, you know, and, and each community has a different threshold, you know, and, and I, I think that's really the question for council is, for our community, what, what does that threshold need to be? Is it a full section, is it a half a section? Um, my personal opinion, the, the 60 acres is, is way too restrictive. We'll, we'll have a number of, of major plan amendments each year as, if that is what's, what's in place, so.
What, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation, I, I, I would, I would look closer to half section to a section, um, worth of land. W- once you start looking at 320 to, to 640 acres, you're starting to make a pretty big, pretty big change. So that would be something that, that would trigger it, I would say. Um, less than that, you're, you're looking, you know, a neighborhood that you're, you're adding here or, you know, a, a, a smaller sized development that you're putting in.
I would be more comfortable with a half section than 640 acres, that would definitely make a big change to, to an area and it'd impact to potentially the cost of streets and fire and all those kinda things.
What's of interest is the comment you just made, that our general plan before has not had any kind of?
It was not, so there, there's, there was two parts, and Jason can elaborate a little bit better on it than I think than I.
Yeah, so the, the previous general plan had no implementation or thresholds in it. Uh, and it was overlooked that it was actually in the municipal code at that time. And the municipal code only called out for 25 acres.
Okay.
So we're going from 25 acres to?
320.
320, that's a big change.
That is a big change.
Mayor?
Yes, councillor Savage?
I have a concern on this, you know, we, we, we passed a general plan in November, of course. Um, 640 acres, just so the public knows, is a square mile. That's quite a big plot of land to do for 640 acres. So I'm more up for that, the 320, if that's where we gotta go, but I'm just a little concerned about this. I, I'm not sure why this is coming up the way it is right now.
Okay. Noted. Vice Mayor? Yeah, I know you wanted to make a comment earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I could support the 320, I think that's kinda middle of the road. A change has to be made, so, I mean, we're, and, and with the potential development and growth that we're gonna be looking at, we, we definitely don't want to stymie it, but we want to make sure that it's done responsibly. So, um, I, I lean towards the 320, if that's the will of the council.
I would agree, I would be on board with that. Councillor Walker?
I, I can agree with that, I was, I was willing to go the 640 because, um, our new director came from Surprise, he saw what happened down there, and if he's thinking that's where we need to go, I could support him on it, but I can also agree with council. Let's go with the 3, 320.
And I was thinking that way too, because the amount of growth that has happened in Surprise, you know, we, you definitely wanna keep things mo- moving. Um, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I can concur, I can, the 320, I think, does get us where we, where we wanna be. I can tell you, what we see a lot as opportunities are coming in, first thing is, is does it meet the general plan? So any developer that's looking at doing a commercial development, large-scale development, something of that nature, if they know that they already meet the general plan element, it takes another, it takes out the unknown at the end of the day. So if you provide a general plan that gives them the ability to develop what they're looking to develop, then it's just a zoning aspect of it and then the development of the site. So a lot of lenders look at it, a lot of the developers look at it that way.
So it gives us more opportunity, makes us more attractive?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Mayor, if I may, just to, to give an idea on, on the process on this. So this, this really, this item here is directing staff to begin the item. So basically from here, now Jason will take this, craft it together, bring it to planning and zoning, they'll have a chance to comment on it, and then it'll come back before council for a final decision.
Well, I think we're basically, oh yes councillor Salley.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. So then, based on that, could you please email us this so that we can read through everything in preparation for when it comes back?
You'll, you'll have a full staff report.
Okay, but we're all, I think, sort of in agreement to go with the half section, 320 acres? Okay. Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5D, zoning code text amendments discussion. Discussion and direction regarding requests received from local developer builders to amend the city, the city zoning code pertaining to front yard setbacks in the R, that are 120 zone and metal buildings, architectural features when constructed in residential, commercial and industrial zones. Staff seeks council direction.
Thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So again, we're asking for some direction this evening. Staff has been approached with, uh, a couple opportunities, uh, from, one, uh, the metal fabricators for our metal buildings within the city, there's a couple retail outlets and contractors that are, that are constructing metal buildings, and they've, they've put forward some concerns, uh, to staff. Uh, and staff has some concerns as well with the implementation of the, the new zoning code that went into effect in 2021. So we're coming before you to ask for some direction on that, as well as another amendment to the front yard setbacks. And again, this is just asking for direction this evening. Uh, so I'll, I'll start with the, the metal structures, to, being approached by local retailers, manufacturers and contractors, they are running into, to concerns when they're trying to sell their product, uh, we have a requirement. We have a requirement that a percentage of the facade have a decorative element, be of a a masonry type element. It becomes very subjective. Staff is put in a position of trying to determine, does a faux finish meet that minimum requirement? Are we asking for block wall, you know, Wayne Scott on on a type of a building? And then that, of course, changes the the structure of the building. It changes the engineering design of the building and so forth. So what we're asking for on that one is really to to come back and look at direction on, do we want to come back and and explore changes to our our actual metal building standards? If we want to do it from a from a staff direction, we can do it. If not, if we want to leave it to to be as a a separate item for the applicant to come back and pursue that change, or again, just leave it as is, or we can address it when we're coming forward as we're doing a comprehensive amendment to the the code during this 2025 calendar year.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Jason, can you confirm for me, this was changed in '21?
'21, correct.
It was '20 at the time, correct, the setback?
So for the, for the setback, for front yard setback in the R 20 designation, it was 30 feet. And it was changed to 20 feet in 2021.
Okay.
So that's the other aspect of, that we're being asked by one of the local developers is to come back and and increase, decrease it back to 20 feet from 30 feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, and then on the on the metal buildings, the metal structures, we actually have one, a project that was just finished, Lux Locker. And they use an alternative, it it's a metal building, but it's an alternative finish. Actually, it's turned into a beautiful project. What did we do? Remind me what we had to do with them.
So we went back, and it was, it was a discretionary action. And I believe it was made by the former interim director. And they looked at, you know, whether or not it met enough of the intent. And I think that's where it becomes the subjective part. So I I can tell you, I've gone out and I've I've met with both of the the entities that have raised this question. I've looked at the faux panels. I think the faux panels look nice. I think it it varies in gauge of thickness of the metal. I think that that in itself makes a difference on what the metal building looks like. But I've seen the the faux wood, I've seen the faux concrete. I've seen the larger building that was just recently finished, I think over off of Gordon or Banks, that has an accessory structure that's an all faux type building.
Alpha Gordon and, I think, Roosevelt?
I think so, yeah.
Right in that area? So, okay.
So staff's really just looking for direction, if if we're happy with leaving it the way it is or if we want to explore it on our own or let the applicants come forward and?
Okay, Counselor Saly?
Is this for commercial only or residential as well?
We're we're getting asked on both sides, commercial and residential. I would say most of it's residential.
I think that it's important that we hold these structures up to a higher standard so that we're not having a bunch of junk put in people's front yards that are lowering the property values or lowering the integrity of the neighborhood. I have one down the street from me. It's a metal garage they just put right in their front yard. It looks cheap and terrible. They didn't put any other kind of stucco or siding on it. It was just left that way. And so I can see why this was a priority for us several years ago is to raise that standard so that you don't have just some flimsy sheds that have been turned into garages and that are visible in a front yard. I think if there's a way, like with the building you had mentioned, to put some siding on it that improves how that looks, then we should stick with that.
Now, you you talked about residential, and of course, the projects I talked to, well, one is residential one on the on Gordon. But commercial, for example, Lux Locker, I use them as an example because that actually building looks very nice, the way it turned out, but?
I think the aesthetic is what's important.
Correct. So, and I think Jason's asking, do we hold the line on on residential? But then where do we go with commercial, like what we've, like we've done that building there?
I personally, I don't have a problem with the residential.
Okay.
With the, with the faux look that they've got. I mean, there's some of them that, if you didn't know it, you wouldn't really know it was a metal building.
Okay.
And that helps it fit into a neighborhood where all the homes are stucco or?
Correct.
You know, where they're stick built, they fit in better. It doesn't look like a metal shed in their front yard with a garage door on it.
Yeah, they, they have, they have like a Tex coat finish that can be applied. They've got the faux wood finish, which is almost like a barn style finish I've seen. They've got different colors, they have camouflage.
I think, can you just, are you looking for being able to put in, you know, some specifics? To make it easier for staff?
Because currently, the standard says that we have to have a masonry finish or masonry like finish. So when we look at an all faux, let's say, wood sided building, it doesn't have a masonry finish. So so that's what we're looking for is the direction on, where where do we want to land on that? And do we want to bring it back as a formal amendment or just take the direction?
Okay. I I don't know if all of you in council have been able to drive by that building on Gordon that we've been talking about. It's on the southeast corner. And that that is interesting look. I mean, the design he chose for that, but it does take it away from the regular metal building look.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, these are things that I really would invite, if we haven't all seen it, we need to drive by and take a look at, so to get a better idea. I can see having a variance, are bending more towards something like that, where it has some architectural feature to it as opposed to sticking to a solid stucco? Yeah, stucco, that'd be preferred, but costs sometimes can be quite prohibitive.
Mayor?
So, yes, Vice Mayor?
So if we gave you direction that we would like these structures to have a faux finish versus just the metal, is that what you're looking for?
Correct. So that would allow us to at least amend the code. We can just address it with?
So it would have to be an alternative to the metal? So it would be faux? I think that's kind of what we're all saying, isn't it? Okay, I could support that.
And we would apply that to commercial also, commercial and residential?
Here's the next one, light industrial. Like commercial, you're talking Stockton Hill?
This is true.
Southern Railroad. What about the neighborhood I'm in for my business? We're we're light industrial, we're fenced, property line, property line. Nobody really sees my building as they drive by. So do we want to put light industrial out to the side?
Very good point.
Currently, the code doesn't differentiate, so we have to apply very similar standards or make a determination. So that's, that would be part of the amendment that we bring back if that's the council's direction.
There's not a whole lot of light industrial in Kewin, but look behind in Great West, you know, Jack in the Box, that area. I mean, are we going to make somebody put this on a metal building over there that's an industrial building? Probably would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, because those buildings, if it was just a regular metal building, those would go right in line with the rest of the neighborhood.
That's light industrial.
So with the exception of light industrial?
Correct. That's, that's truly what we bring back as an amendment to to clean up the code.
Okay.
Okay. So are we all, okay?
I want to talk about the setbacks before you go.
At least on that first part, Jason, we got that taken care of.
Appreciate it. It's a two part.
I I I would like to know, you know, what what is the feedback you're hearing, 20 versus 30? Why, you know, why was 20 acceptable for so long and then it went to 30? What's the struggle with 30? Give me some, some comments.
The background is it was 20 feet in in the previous code iterations. And it was changed in 2021 to go to the 30 foot setback. It did impact one of the developers that is currently building on some of the properties here in Kingman. He did have a platted project, so he does get to at least utilize the 20 foot setback that was entitled with it. However, at the same time, they have been asking, you know, would we come back and amend it back to 30 feet? I can tell you, when you look at half acre or acre properties, we require a 30 foot setback for a one acre property. It's more of an estate nature. I think it's the same for the half acre properties at the end of the day. So it it truly just comes back to whether or not, do we want staff to come back forward with an amendment? Do we want an applicant to come forward with an amendment or leave it as is? Half acre properties are more more intuitive to to the larger setbacks. And I think it's just, it's just part of the development process.
But I can see that on a, on a 20, on a half acre property, I can see why they'd want a 20 foot because if they wanted to put an accessory building back and back in their backyard, it gives them more room to do that. So.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we're, we're taking away the opportunity for them to fully develop the property, you know, by that extra 10 feet.
So the thought would be to go back to the 20 foot where it was all along, or where it's been for a long time?
Prior to 2021, yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanted to know the reasoning, you know. I would want somebody to, you know, if it's been 20 for the longest time, you know, I just wanted to know why it went to 30? Because the majority of the properties are at 20, correct?
Yes. Yeah, majority of the properties, anywhere from 15 to 20 for your, for your smaller lot properties. 20 feet currently for the half acre, then 30 feet for the acre. And I, and I believe, you know, if we go back and we take a look at the 2021 code, there was a lot of iterations of various development standards that went into that that I think went went forward without maybe either the full evaluation of it and so forth. And I think that's why we're doing a lot of the cleanup today. And this is just one of those that wasn't included when we did the cleanup because we weren't looking to do development standards specific at that time.
I just, I'd like to give the property owner the maximum ability to develop their property. So I I'm in favor of going to the 20, what it was.
Counselor Ward, you have your mic on, so I figured you wanted to comment?
No, I'm I'm good with the 20 foot setback.
Okay. Okay, council? We do have a citizen that would like to comment on this, Mr. Pennington Travis, would you like to come up?
Keep my mouth shut. I just would like to make the clear statement that we've done the research on this and we're certain that staff, staff was not aware that this was being changed from 20 to 30. We feel like it was completely in the consultant, it could have been a typo. But it was, it was not staff that did this, and it was not council didn't, there was never any direction from council to say, hey, make this 30. And it wasn't, when it was brought to you guys, it wasn't pointed out that this is what was one of the changes. So we found out kind of years after this, we're setting up houses like we've always set up at the 20 feet. Sometimes it's nicer to have that extra 10 feet in the backyard rather than the front yard, right? Makes a difference between a pool or garage. So that's the why, but also, we're convinced that you guys never heard this, right? And that should be proper, we, I guess we're having our day in court today, so. Any more questions, I'd be happy to?
Thanks, Travis. We appreciate that comment on experience because that does, you know, does weigh into it all of it. And you've had three years of experience on this, so thanks. Okay, council, I think we're all in the same, sharing the same sentiment, to return it back to the 20 feet? Okay, Jason, I think you have your answers.
We'll bring it back. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 5E, discussion and authorization to perform a citizen survey regarding revenue options. At the council's fall retreat held November 6, 2024, the council requested additional information regarding possible revenue sources and measuring the public's appetite for those options. High Ground Incorporated has prepared a proposal to perform a survey of citizens, city residents to determine the viability of the various options. The cost of the survey is $15,000 and would be funded by the general fund. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. At our fall retreat, we discussed a number of the finance, financial issues that we have here at the city and and the need for for identifying additional revenue sources. So staff has reached out, we we've got Mr. Paul Benz on the line. We reached out to his group, High Ground Incorporated. They do surveys, they they look at, they do certain polls and those types of things to identify the public's interest in a certain topic, really try and gauge. The intent of this would be to to reach out to the citizens, see what appetite is out there for for additional revenue sources, whether that be considering a property tax, whether that be considering a an additional sales tax, whether it be considering, you know, one of those revenue generations that is associated with public safety or all of those types of things, really to be able to give council the 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 background and information that you need in order to to move forward with with those types of decisions. So in looking at this, and and I apologize, Paul, I probably didn't do your service in any service there. But but they they have, they they reach out, they they do phone interviews and talk about these various options with with our our citizens. And then based on that information, they're they're able to compile it and then give us that information to to help us make a better decision. So Paul, if if I may, I'll let you clean up what I just laid out there.
Sure. Good, good evening, Mayor, Vice Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Benz. I'm the Senior Vice President of Research and Strategy at High Ground Public Affairs. We performed over 40 statewide, regional, and local surveys last year. Our focus is talking to voters, people who participate in elections. And when you look at a funding issue like this, you would like to understand before you ever to work, to move forward, where your electorate is, what they're thinking, and how they feel about what the potential proposal would be. My goal is to provide you accurate and unbiased information. It doesn't behoove you to tell you something that you'd like to hear or something that you want to hear. What I present is information based on what's out there and what the electorate thinks. We do live telephonic surveys, which means we actually call individuals using operators, calling home phones and direct dialing cell phones as required by law. We balance our survey sample based on age, party, region, and gender to ensure that we have an accurate and reflective sample that looks like your electorate. It looks like the audience that would actually show up based on what type of election we would be looking at. Traditionally, what we do is we ask some warm up questions about the city and how things are going. And then we do an initial pre-test, which is where we ask people some of these ballot questions or potential funding sources and get a gauge. And then what we do is some reason testing, which is getting an understanding of what's motivating them. So do they feel like the city has enough resources? Are they concerned about public safety? Are there other items that rise to the top? And measure those against some of the detriments, you know, tax concerns, inflationary concerns, people who live on a fixed income or other items like that. Then after that, what we traditionally do is some follow up questions and a post test to ensure we get an understanding of sort of where people start and where people end. And then we bring that data back to you to give you a good understanding of what the electorate is thinking as you make your decisions.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Council, any questions for Mr. Benz?
I do.
Sean, go ahead.
Hello, I'm looking at the cost of this. For 300 responses, basically, we're we're looking at $15,000. Why is it $5,000 more to go to 400?
Because what, part of that is the programming of the survey. It's also comes down to the number of people you're actually connecting. So we're talking about 300 interviews versus 400 interviews. And so, you know, getting the phone set up, getting the people making those calls, balancing that that 300 sample versus the 400 sample. If you go a little bit larger, sometimes the cost isn't quite as as broad. But really, what you're paying for pretty much is the amount of time it takes in the field, the number of minutes it takes to actually conduct the individual surveys. As you see in the proposal, the costs are all based on the amount and length of the survey. And so the number of questions I get asked a lot is what's the number of questions that are involved in that? Well, it really depends on the length of the questions. You can ask a lot of really short questions in a period of time. Or if each question's 100 words, you can ask fewer questions.
I don't think that quite answered my question because we're looking at the same 15 minutes between 300 and 400, and it's $5,000 difference?
Right, so we're recommending the 300 sample based on the size of your electoral audience. There's about 24,000 registered voters or so, about 17,000 or so likely phone numbers. So our connection rate in order to make sure that we have the period of time to get, we believe a 300 sample is the more reliable one that we can get at the cheaper cost.
And these are based on phone calls?
Yes, these are based on phone calls to registered voters within the city of Kingman.
And how do you contact those people or know who to contact?
So we 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 have a database of all of the registered voters within the city. And then we have their, you know, we don't know how they voted, but we do know if they do or do not vote. We know their age, we know their party, we know their gender, and we know where they live. And so then we set quotas to balance based on the individuals we're looking for. So we know the approximate makeup of your party registration, we know the approximate makeup of where people live, we know the approximate, approximate age demographics. So we make sure we balance all of those. And so we set up the number of phone calls to reflect. And so we set up the number of phone calls to reflect that, that, all of those different demographics and balance them out. So your, your community skews a little bit older, your community skews a little bit more conservative. So we'd make sure that we would dial a sample within those three hundred that reflect that.
So on the three hundred, how do you choose which three hundred you're going to survey?
So we put in the full twenty-two, twenty-four thousand voters into the system, and then we start dialing them. And then what we do is, as we fill up a quota, say, an age quota, we start looking at the rest of the segment that's younger, and then calling into that segment. So we don't, it's all random sample, but we set these demographic quotas. So near the end, we are more selective on who we're trying to call. But we're never trying to call an individual. We're actually trying to fill up age, party, region, gender segments.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Good question. Counsel, Vice Mayor?
I had a question for you, Sean. Is it Sean?
It's Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry. I was looking at Sean's name. So are we guaranteed to get three hundred responses, or are we guaranteed to get three hundred connects?
No, you'll guarantee that the data will be based on three hundred responses. So that will mean more phone calls than that will go out. One of the other things is that we don't say that the survey's sponsored by the city of Kingman. We don't want folks to take the survey that wouldn't normally take it because they love the city, or because they have a bone to pick. What we do is we call on behalf of the calling firm itself. We also request that you don't put out a notification that we're doing this type of polling. That allows us to ensure that we're not adding any additional bias. But your response, your results will be based on three hundred completed interviews. If somebody doesn't complete the interview, they're not included in the sample.
And my other question is, do, what has been your expectation? I mean, you say fifteen minutes. If you call me, I'm not sure that I'm going to give you fifteen minutes of my time for a survey.
Well, what we...
But, but let me finish. So, so I just wanted to understand, what, what is, I mean, I'm looking at the ten-minute option for connecting with another hundred people at fifteen thousand two hundred. So, that, that's kind of where I'm at. So, so talk me through that scenario. Fifteen minutes versus ten minutes more, you know, reaching a hundred more people?
So, that's a great question. I'm sorry for interrupting. What we're talking about here is, I think we're looking at, we quote all of our surveys based on the actual length after we sit down and put the questions together. So that's sort of the upward measurement would be fifteen minutes in length. We do find people are willing to stay on the phone for fifteen minutes to talk about local issues, particularly taxation issues. And the way we walk them through the instrument itself will keep people on the phone. I also monitor every single one of our surveys, all forty that we did last year, to ensure that we're getting a great connection rate, and that people aren't hanging up. We've had surveys in the past, not this last year or so, but in the past, where people were not making it all the way through. And we stop that and, and, you know, make sure that we're looking at, how do we ensure that people get through the entire interview? We can certainly look at the ten-minute version and do a four hundred sample. But again, with only twenty-four thousand or so registered voters, we may have a little bit, it will take us longer time to get four hundred respondents. And it may, with that added time, with the added number of times we have to call through the list, there might actually be an added cost. So these are estimates based on the total time. But in our case, I think the three hundred sample, whether you do fifteen minutes or ten minutes, I think is probably your best bet.
Okay, then I'm leaning towards the ten minutes at three hundred.
If I may, Mayor, Paul, could you, could you explain? I know when we met, we had, we had talked about, you know, looking through the various questions, and based on the, the options that we were looking at, whether it be a property tax, a sales tax, and, and some of those other questions. I think that's where we had come up with the fifteen minutes, is in order to, to be able to address all those. Is that correct?
That's correct. One of the challenges that we face, if you're going to look at multiple funding sources, is you want to avoid negotiating with the voter. You don't want to give them one tax source right after another, right after another. Because what you may do is create a false positive, whereas somebody may not want a property tax. They may not necessarily want a sales tax either. But if you ask them one after another, what you find is that you sometimes will get a false positive on those. So, the way we would put these surveys together is, is a battery of questions on each of the different tax sources, so that we can really measure them against one another. And some folks would get one type first, another folks would get another type first, and then we would rotate. Everybody would get every question, but not necessarily in the same order. To conduct that kind of survey, where we're going to explore more than one type of item, takes a little bit more time. If we did have only ten minutes or so to conduct the survey, we might have to cut some of that short, which we can do, but it might not give you the in-depth information that we're looking for.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor?
I just wanted to thank you.
Yes, Sean. Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay. Looking at this, and having grown up here, and knowing kind of our demographics, I'm kind of astute to all that. I don't think there would be a problem going for the four hundred at ten minutes. You know, because people have short attention spans. But I think you would get quite a bit of feedback with the four hundred at ten minutes as opposed to three hundred at fifteen minutes. That's just my opinion. I don't know how the council feels about that. But I think the little bit more people we have involved in this, because this is going to be a big project for the city to figure out revenue we need to raise. So I'd rather have more of a sample than less of a sample, and kind of keep the costs the same with having more samples at four hundred instead of three hundred.
Can I share one bit of information on that, if that's okay?
Sure.
A three hundred sample has a five-point-five margin of error. A four hundred sample has a four-point-nine margin of error. So what, the, the difference between the additional hundred interviews gets you about a half a point, a little over a half a point of additional accuracy. So a margin of error is, if I were to conduct this survey a hundred times, with ninety-five out of a hundred times, it would fall within four and a half, you know, five to five and a half points of the, of the answer here. So, really, I know that the four hundred number of interviews sounds very attractive as a number, and we can certainly perform that number. But the margin of error difference between the two is not as great as you, as one might think.
What does the council think about this?
Thank you, Sean. Counsel, comments? Counselor Saly?
I think that we should go with the recommendation of fifteen minutes, three hundred people. I, I know you've done this before, and I imagine you probably have to call a hundred people to get one person to do the survey. Maybe if you're lucky, it's a hundred to one. It's probably a lot like selling credit cards, or something like that, where it's just a lot of contacts before you're going to get a yes. And I, I think that the three hundred, it sounds like you're getting a reasonable margin of error, and it'll give us the feedback we need. Because really, what it comes down to is, we're talking about spending fifteen thousand dollars in order to have a better idea of whether we should spend the hundred or two hundred thousand dollars it costs to put something on the ballot that may not get approved. That, that is a big risk, spending that much money. We have no idea whether or not the community will, will even consider supporting something like this. So for me, fifteen minutes, three hundred.
Like to keep it at that? Okay. Counselor Walker?
I personally, if somebody called me and said they wanted fifteen minutes of my time, I'm busy. But a lot of people will sit there and take it. And, and this firm's done quite a few of these, so I have to go with what he's telling us. But me personally, I'd probably say I'd go for the ten-minute one. But if he's telling us he thinks that's our best paying for the buck, I'm going to go with him.
Okay. I, I am total agreement with what you, I mean, time-wise?
Time-wise?
I don't want to spend fifteen minutes on the...
I don't want to spend ten, but if you tell me fifteen, I'm going to see you later.
Yeah. So, but, Paul, you know, we are relying on, on your expertise. This, you've gone down this road a number of times. So... I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Counselor Walker, and Counselor Saly. So...
Vice Mayor, I know you'd, I think, opt for the ten?
I'd go with the fifteen. I mean, when you look at the difference of cost, I mean, yeah. I personally don't think, I think it's going to be a lot of calling to get three hundred people to stay on the phone with you for fifteen minutes. But you're the professional, and I'm going to trust that your advice is solid.
Okay, any other comments? Or thoughts? Counselor Dykens?
Are they told right at the very beginning of the conversation, this is a fifteen-minute survey, or a ten-minute survey?
Good point.
No, they are not. They are...
So twelve minutes in the survey, you know, you got three more minutes left. They're not really going to know the difference, as far as I'm concerned. I, I, I'm in favor of going with the recommendation, especially with the work that the city manager has done with him. I get that this is their recommended suggestions, and I'm, I'm in favor of going with that.
Okay. Counselor Ward, since you were last, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. That being said, then you need a, a motion on this, correct? Carl? Okay. Can we have a motion then approving, as has been presented to us, with the fifteen thousand three hundred? I mean, fifteen thousand, fifteen-minute mark?
I will make that motion.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, motion carries. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Well, that concludes basically almost everything. Department reports, item number six, we have none. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Walsh?
Nothing to report, sir.
Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Saly? Counselor Dykens? Vice Mayor?
I'm good.
We're good. I think all of us...
Wait!
Oh, Counsel Savage, I'm sorry. Sorry, Sean. Go ahead.
I'm good. You all have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sure our council is in agreement with me that we wish everybody a Happy New Year, belated a little bit, but as we start this new year, that we look for ways to make our lives better and make our community better. And I appreciate all that is done. I have nothing else. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Okay, Sean, so I don't forget you?
Yes. Being that I was a little late coming in, I apologize for that. Where are we at with the commission for the golf course?
Good question. Counselor Walsh, or is that a Carl question?
Hopefully, we'll have it at the next meeting.
There you go, Sean.
Okay. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Once again, thanks to everybody that has been here in chambers. We appreciate your participation tonight, and be careful going home. This meeting is adjourned.